Good morning. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If you'll all stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I would move to approve the agenda. Vance moves.
Second.
Second by Patty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Okay. We will move into, we have to have a motion on that too, right?
Yes, we need a motion to recess.
Yep, for the, to follow the EDA agenda, so.
I would move to recess.
Second.
Then moved to second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Nancy, come up and give us a little review of our EDA.
Good morning.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Christmas.
Mr. Chair, we will need to call the meeting to order and then do the agenda review as well.
That's true. Okay. I guess I'll call the meeting to order then for the, our economic development and meeting. We have a, yeah, we have to have a motion, I mean.
Well, I can approve the agenda, so there are no changes to that today.
No changes to the agenda. Kip moves the agenda.
Second.
Then second by Patty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. All right.
Mr. Chair, I would move the minutes of October eleventh.
I will second that.
And move, big Kevin, second by Vance, to move the minutes. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Okay. And we have, you got the floor.
Okay, so the first item that we have here is the Minnesota Housing Program, the Minnesota Cities Participation Program, which is a homeownership program. So it provides funding for us for first-time home buyers and does include some down payment assistance monies. And this program is a way for the city or the county to work with the state across the whole state to leverage bond dollars for homeownership rather than the county just doing it on their own. We can bond with them if there's no cost to the county to do that. And we do leverage dollars then that are able to help people in our communities purchase homes. And I know we've been doing this for the last about five years, and I think the first year we had like seventeen homes and then last year we had forty-seven homes. So it's been increasing every year, so it's been exciting to see how that has been expanding. And as we have new resources for helping people purchase homes, this is just another layer to help families do that. So we're hoping in the next couple of years we'll see a lot more. We did get our information back for this year of two thousand and twenty-two, and we only did thirty-three homes, so I was a little disappointed, but still it helped thirty-three home buyers purchase homes. And we know the economic conditions were really hard for families and even finding homes was very difficult, so we can kind of understand why our number went down. But we have other opportunities this year with the Impact Fund. And so we'll see a lot more layering using our voucher program with this program and Impact Fund. And even we're seeing more of the community land trusts coming in, so hoping to see a lot more families that we can serve. And we'll be able to track it to know which programs are serving which families under which programs. And hopefully next year we'll be able to give you a lot more information on that. But this that we have here for you is just for you to approve the application and agreement with the state to enter into this program again for next year. So we get your approval now and then in January, the first week in January, we submit it to the state and they'll put us in that pool then for first-time home buyer programs. So we just need your approval to sign the application and the agreement with the state.
Chair. Okay. Vance?
I will make a motion to approve the Minnesota City Participation Program application.
Yep, that sounds, second. Same with Patty. Any discussion? Sounds good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. There.
Then the next item on the agenda is the Public Housing Operating Budget. And you may remember in the last number of years, we've always taken the resolution that the city does for public housing units. And they did approve that budget on December fifth, so a couple weeks ago. And the Department of HUD requires us to also come to you and get your approval on the budget as well. So we've kind of given you an outline of the budget and the resolution, just outlining the expenses. And I did give you not just the operating budget, but I did also give you the capital funds budget, so you kind of have an idea of the different pots of money that we're funding the programs under. So we do have our public housing, which is sixty-six units scattered around Blue Earth County. And the budget for that is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And then we also have the breakdown of the budget for Breckenridge. And Breckenridge is eighteen units in Eco Lake, and half of those units are public housing and half of them are tax credit market rent at that property, but their budgets are pretty much the same. So we're looking at about seventy-two, seventy-three thousand dollars on an annual basis for those nine units as well. And then we do have a capital funds budget because we do get operating funds from the fund for administering the program, but then we also get capital funds to maintain those units as well. And so we're looking at two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars projecting for next year. And it really fluctuates depending on allocations from the government, but we're just kind of estimating this as going to average. You'll see last year we have three hundred and eighteen, kind of still coming out of the pandemic and COVID funding that was there, but estimating the two hundred and sixteen. And then I know a lot of those capital improvements, a lot of that has to do with, as units turn over, we do have costs to return them back to a leasing condition, updating them. Some of them have been leased for a long time, and so they do need some modernization, and so that's what some of those are. Usually we do about four units a year on that. Otherwise, I would just recommend that you approve the budget as approved by the city council and as presented.
So moved. And moved by Kip. Do a second.
Second.
Second. Vance, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. That was pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Have a great day.
Christmas.
All right.
Moved to adjourn.
You, I'm just gonna add, yep, been moved to adjourn. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. All right, we are back to our board meeting. And I guess we have a gentleman from, with Drainage.
Got Ryan here.
Yeah.
Morning, Ryan.
Yeah, Ryan is taking charge. Okay. Morning.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning. How's everyone?
Good.
We've got three items on the Drainage Agenda this morning, starting with County Ditch Twelve. A petition pursuant to Minnesota Statute one oh three E seven one five for repairs to County Ditch Twelve Public Drainage System was received by Blue Earth County Property Environmental Resources on June fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. The petitioners are requesting a cleaning of portions of the main line to County Ditch Twelve. The repairs will also include the establishment of a control structure protecting the wetland in section fifteen of Manquill Township. Today, we are asking the Drainage Authority to set a hearing date of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three for the proposed petition of County Ditch Twelve.
So moved.
And moved by Kip.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
All right, second item is County Ditch Fifty-seven, also setting a hearing date. Blue Earth County Ditch Fifty-seven is a public drainage system which is primarily located in Buford and Mapleton Township. Repair Report twenty-two dash zero zero seven was previously approved by the Drainage Authority in April of two thousand and twenty-two involving the installation of a new bench area for future maintenance and cleaning of the system. As the result of the repair work, additional perennial vegetated buffer areas needed. Therefore, additional damage payments are required under one oh three E Minnesota Drainage Code. Viewers must be appointed. Any time additional damage are paid as part of a public drainage system. The primary area of construction and additional damages payments is in section twenty-seven of Buford Township. At today's meeting, I am requesting, excuse me, we are requesting the Drainage Authority set a hearing date to consider the viewer's report and also the engineer's report for January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Kip. Could you, could you tell me what a bench area?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Boy, you didn't, you didn't put up a bench here.
It's not physically, yeah, what you're thinking. It's only installed.
It's a bench, it's a bench for a backle.
Right, yeah, for a large excavator. So these ditches are too deep that even these specialized machines with sixty-foot arms on them can't reach the bottom to clean anymore. So we go in and pick a midpoint where that machine can effectively clean yet get rid of its spoils. And we put this V-shaped bench into the.
All right. Now it makes perfect sense to me. I just, what the heck's a bench here?
Yeah.
But thank you very much.
Yes.
No?
Good question.
Cutout.
It's a cutout, yeah.
It's a big two-stage ditch.
Yep, very high up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, Ryan. Okay.
My last item is, sorry, my apologies.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post carries. All right, now you can.
Okay. My last item for you today is the single and multi-year special drainage levy recommendation. I have a quick memo that goes along with that, and the numbers and stuff are also in your packet. I believe they were handed the updated, okay? A quick background, the following attachments are the recommended single-year and multi-year special drainage system levies for payable two thousand and twenty-three and beyond. Attachment A lists the single-year levies for Blue Earth County Drainage Systems, including the public drainage assessment that applies to all systems. Attachment B lists the multi-year levies for Blue Earth County Drainage Systems, including assessments for the principal amount payable in two thousand and twenty-three on drainage ditch bonds issued in previous years. Internal financing may be used on the new multi-year levies either for the entirety of the assessment or prior to being converted to a bond. The financing method will be determined based on which option produces the most beneficial terms for the property owners. There are four projects that are not yet completed. We are planning on bonding for the four projects in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three. The estimated bond amount will be approximately three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Recommended action for today is approval of the attached resolution approving the collection of special drainage system levies in two thousand and twenty-three as identified in the attachments. So the need for the correction, I just wanted to, excuse me, add to the memo, was that there was two clerical errors, one being the ditch code issue of D five six six that was repeated on two systems. And the other was also a duplicate for JTD one Wasika. The one-year assessment was duplicated. All those errors have been corrected. You have the updated copy, corrected copies.
Yeah, okay. So moved. Yep, I just, has been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
If I may make one quick update with CD fifty-six and Lake Crystal, that cleaning sediment issue.
Yeah.
I've been on site multiple times. The contractor has successfully cleaned the Humphrey Street Fox Pulver, which was no small feat.
Really?
Yeah. They're, they're very intelligent group, so they got it done. They started with the open ditch yesterday. They'll be cleaning that island or the sediment area probably by weekend, if you choose the word.
Good. Yep, that's good.
That's, that's all I have for you.
Okay.
And with that.
Thanks, Ryan. Go ahead, Kevin.
And well, part of that is to get the lawns back into decent shape either now or in the spring or sounded last night like it was kind of a mess.
As to be expected, right? Because you're dealing with a liquid and a frozen hard surface. So yes, it looks smeared even less than presentable at the moment. But no doubt, working with that contractor, I'm confident they'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. Have a good day.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Okay. We have, uh, calling juvenile. It's John. There he is. Okay. Good morning, Chair.
Morning, John.
All right, this morning, good morning. This morning, I bring to you a contract between Blue Earth County and Carver County, also including Nicola County as well regarding usage of the juvenile detention center located in Carver County. This has been a topic that we've discussed in various settings at times. I know you have been a part of some of these conversations at the Advisory Board Commissioner just discussing the lack of resources that we have had over the past couple of years as it relates to out-of-home placements for juveniles. And so we've been doing some visits to different facilities, having conversations with different facilities. And Carver is our most, our closest facility that we can use in order to have a bed for a juvenile to be held while they're awaiting court or further placement. Carver County's facility, facility, facilities located at their jail, it is called an eight-day facility, meaning that a juvenile cannot reside there for more than eight days. So they don't offer a ton of programming there. It's more of a holding place for them to then either return to the community or move into a new placement. And so we've been kind of evaluating our options as it relates to the idea of doing a contract with different facilities in order to kind of guarantee that bed. Because what you see sometimes is that facilities will say, well, we're either at capacity or other counties will reach out and they'll operate under contracts with different counties as well. And so this is something that counties have been doing around the state, typically larger counties. And so this is something that we looked at doing here as well. And the idea of sharing the contract with Nicola County actually came up through our conversations with Carver County. So I connected with their jail administrator, and we were just having a conversation about the struggles that we have, you know, in southern Minnesota. We just don't have a lot of resources for these kids. And they had thrown out the idea of, well, what do you, you know, how do you feel about, you know, sharing something with Nicola County? That way you guys can both receive the benefits of having that bed available to you, and it would also cut down on some of the costs. So we're going to look at sharing this contract with Nicola County. Nicola County did have this in front of their board last week. And then the hope is to have this in front of the Carver County board next week. So I bring it to you today. The contract would be for one bed day for the year, and so you're looking at an overall cost of forty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. The contract language says not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, and that is in the unlikely event that you end up using more than one bed per day throughout the year, which I really don't foresee. We have never achieved that in the past as I've looked at previous year's data. But that's just trying to kind of cap that total amount at fifty thousand dollars in the unlikely event that you would exceed your one bed per day. With the split with Nicola County, we're looking at about an eighty-twenty split. Obviously, our usage of the facility would be higher than Nicola. But this just again is, is one of the things that we do with Nicola County also. This just shows a, you know, collaboration with them. I've had conversations frequently with their directors talking about how we kind of navigate through this. And we're gonna, we want to try this for a year in a, in a collaboration. through this, and we're gonna, we want to try this for a year in a, in a collaboration with Nicola County, but if we see that we would be better off just going on our own, we may do that as we look forward into like 2024. So this is, this is our first attempt at doing this. This isn't something I brought in front of the board previously, but it is something we feel like is important to do just in my conversations with both local law enforcement or Sheriff's Department and just our, our partners, knowing that we will have this bed available to us when we need it is really key for us, especially moving forward. So we're trying to kind of, I, I think what you see is a lot of counties trying to take care of themselves, and, and in some fashions, we're doing that, but we're also doing it in collaborative fashion. We're collaborating with both Carver and Nicola County at the same time. So, so like I said, about an 80/20 split, we would be sharing this with Nicola County. Obviously, majority of the use would be ours, but really what we're doing here is securing that bed spot up there at Carver County, so when we're looking to make sure that we have a place for a juvenile to go, that they will be our first stop. And like I said, they are the closest facility we have. We really just don't have a lot of options available in southern Minnesota for, for our juveniles, so I would just respectfully request approval of the contract.
How, how big is their facility? I mean, how many, how many beds do they have?
Yep. So they have a seven-bed facility, and it's located directly at the jail, at the, at the Carver County Government Center. It is just an offshoot of the jail, site and sound separation, so you kind of walk through two kind of double doors, so to speak, to go over to the JDC side. They've got a small programming room. They offer school there as well, but because they are licensed as an eight-day facility, they don't have to offer any additional programming beyond just school and some basic, you know, one-on-one stuff. But because of the type of license they have, they don't have to require any additional programming, but the juveniles cannot stay more than eight days.
And, and I'm just thinking off my head, but I know that we're not filled up in our jail.
Correct, correct.
Do we have an area that Blue Earth County could do the same thing in our jail by separating it off? You'd have to, you know, but do we have an area in our, our jail area that we could actually do the same thing? I'm not, I'm not saying this is something we should be doing in '23 or even '24, but I mean, thinking outside the box.
Right.
Is there, is there an opportunity to have our own juvenile holding facility in Blue Earth County and then let other counties pay us?
Right. Without, you know, doing brick and mortar, I would say no. You really have to have that site and sound separation in order to be able to operate the facility. And I think what you'll hear is, you know, there, I, it's a conversation that'll probably need to take place at some point down the road, like you say. I think we've got a good opportunity here with Carver County right now to utilize something that's, it's not close, but it's not that far away either, but we really do need to consider the future of southern Minnesota as it relates to the use of, you know, a secure detention facility, because we are not unique in this situation. I don't know what counties like Martin County or Mauer County, you know, you think about people even, even further south than us, how they're handling this situation. We used to have a JDC in, in Olmsted County in Rochester, and that facility closed in 2020. And so they are, they are not operating a JDC in Olmsted County either. They're a, a large, you know, regional center. And so they are looking at contracts with Anoka County. And you talk about the idea of having to transport a juvenile up to, from Rochester up to Lina Lakes or Anoka just for a secure detention use, it, it's crazy. And so you kind of go into, you know, looking at this like self-preservation almost, like, well, I want to take care of my, my staff and the deputies, you know, having to be aware of the time that they're going to be spending on the road in order to take a kid up to a secure facility. And so in the immediate future, I don't know that it's something that anybody here is interested in, but there has to be some future conversations, and, and we've talked about it a little bit in various settings. You know, how do we make sure that as far as the, the southern portion of the state goes, that we make sure that we are able to say that we have options available to us? Red Wing does not offer secure detention. You know, so, so beyond Chaska or Carver County, we're looking at Wilmer over in Prairie Lakes, and we're looking at Hastings and Dakota County. And so that is, when I talked to the Sheriff's Department about where I should be putting our resources right now as far as this issue, it was, we need to take care of Carver County first. They are the closest facility for us as far as where, you know, deputies and transport officers are going to have to go if they have to take a kid up there. And then I will probably, and I, I am already looking at what we would do as far as it relates to Prairie Lakes over in Wilmer. That would be the next conversation, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. John?
Motion for this.
Yep, we have a motion. The moved, Vance, the second?
Second.
Second by Patty. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's only, what, Carver, 50, 60 miles?
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
House kept and job.
Yeah, you know, if you can have a transport officer or one of my agents or deputy on the road and back in about an hour and a half, they prefer that much more than the Prairie Lakes two hours one-way. That's, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, no kidding.
Thanks, John. Have a good Christmas.
Thank you.
Have a good Christmas.
Thanks, John.
Okay. We have then, oh, we got Ryan here, so we got Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan. Items here?
Yeah, we got a few action items for consideration and discussion this morning. Lots of discussion topics.
All right.
All right, so the first action item for consideration is final contract payment number seven of State Aid Project 07598029. This is the County Road 151, bridge replacement over the Rice Creek. This was constructed by M&amp;K Bridge Construction from Walnut Grove, Minnesota. Original contract amount, $701,731.77. Final revised contract amount paid to date, $711,144.96, with the final contract payment amount being $7,111.45. I would recommend approval of this final contract payment.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move, Vance moves to approve. Second, Kevin by Kevin. Any discussion? If I understand it, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
Another contract final payment number 10 for State Aid Project 007627015. This is for Casaw 27 Agency Street Reconstruction in the city of Eagle Lake. Contractors Dirt Merchant Incorporated, original contract, $244,244,2, let me try that again, $2,442,419.35, with a total final amount paid to date of $2,438,558.2, and the final contract voucher payment amount, $29,297.22. I would recommend that final contract payment.
So moved.
It's been moved by Kip. Second?
Second.
Second by Vance. Discussions? It's a good thing. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
It's a good thing for us to be able to get these closed out before any year. It makes our paperwork easier, so.
Yeah.
Trying to clean this process up and move them along if contractors cooperate. The last one that I have for final contract payments is for our 2022 Batumis Maintenance Overlays. This includes Casaw 5, 1427, 34, 41, 47, and 48 by Minnesota Paving Materials, final pay request voucher number four. Final contract amount paid to date, $3,652,857.95. Final voucher amount, $38,398.62. I would recommend approval of that final payment as well.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll move it.
Patty moves, her second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Great.
Action item number four is consideration of the resolution included in your board packets, supporting the city of Eagle Lake's transportation alternatives grant application. As you may recall, the TA program is what we utilized to construct the trail along Stolzman Road. It is a federal grant program that's competitively based. The city of Eagle Lake is interested in pursuing a shared use path along the eastern right ofway of Casaw 27 from Thomas Drive, which is kind of the, where we concluded the project, the reconstruction project, to the south along the trailer park, and then along the township road over to pick up, I forget the name of the city street we were over there, but that subdivision that's on the very southeast corner of town. Concerns with connecting that, and this is resulted request following up on a MAPLE pedestrian study that we'll touch on a little bit later, but with this grant application and the resolution, if the city were successful in obtaining these funds, the county as the delegated contract process holder, agreement holder with the state would be responsible for at least administering the contract end of this. So we, we are having some responsibility in this agreement if they are successful. But again, we would have a financial responsibility to pick up half of the share that the grant would not cover. Right now, the grant, I believe, is an 80% grant, and we've had pass success also going after additional DNR funds to use as matching dollars. So I would recommend approval of this resolution of support.
So moved.
Been moved by Kip. Her second?
Second.
Second by Patty. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
Action item number five, consideration of bids for purchase of a 2023 oil distributor with truck chassis. We received two quotes, one from, based on state bid source while pricing, one from Roughridge Johnson with a Rosco distributor tank on it and a Freightliner chassis. That was high bid, including trade-in, $250,250. The low bid was Swanson Equipment with an Etneer, I'm sorry, I'm not pronouncing that right, I know, Centennial tank and then on a Freightliner chassis as well. Low bid, $217,456.50. I would recommend award to Swanson.
Okay, we have a motion.
So moved.
The moved Vance.
Second.
Second by Kip.
Can you explain the difference between the Rosco and the Etneer tank? Are there, is there? Is it a big difference?
They're both specified.
Is it one, is one any better than the other or not?
Um, not to my knowledge. It's different manufacturers of the tank equipments and the pumps and things like that. Right now, I know we have a Rosco on the existing truck that we're trading in, however, I don't, speaking with our maintenance staff, they don't see a need to, we would feel that that significant level of loyalty to it, yeah.
It doesn't make any-
The chassis is just as important as anything.
All right. Yeah, and they're both on Freightliners, so.
And that's not changed, it's Freightliner. Okay. All, let's see. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
All right, thank you. The next item for consideration is the MnDOT contract number 1052218 for federal participation in construction. This is an update, another five-year extension of our delegated contract process. So as you know, Blue Earth County is one of only two agencies in Blue Earth County that has authority to issue federal funds from, from MnDOT ourselves in the city of Manicato. So on behalf of the small cities, townships, et cetera, we are responsible for administering federal dollars for them for transportation-related projects. This is the delegated contract process agreement. I would recommend approval of said agreement.
Okay. So, has moved by Patty.
Second.
Second by Kip. For the federal participation, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
Okay. And following that is also a resolution authorizing MnDOT agreement number 1052218. MnDOT does agreements, and then they also require resolutions, which is, seems excessive, but I would recommend a word of that, or approval of that resolution.
So moved.
Formals, okay. The move by Vance.
Second.
Second by Patty. Discussion, get all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
All right. We'll move on into project updates. We're busy with, as soon as we get out of construction, the guys are jumping into working on design and delivering the next year's and the subsequent year projects. So County State Highway 16 is one we've been talking about for quite a while, it's kind of been put on the back burner due to other projects taking precedent, but we are in a good place with that. The plans are at 95%, and they're going to be submitted to State Aid at the end of the month for their approval, so that means we could send it out to bid. Right-of-way acquisition is going, progressing well, so I always get nervous when that's, it never seems like natural, but I think the folks out there are ready for the project and the improvement that it's going to bring, so Jack's moving right along with right-of-way acquisition out there. So we're anticipating early bidding in 2023 for County State Highway 16.
2023, okay.
Casaw 13, which is southwest of Good Thunder that runs from Casaw 1 to US Highway 169. SRF is making revisions for a 95% plan submitted by New Year to the county. We'll give those a quick look, and those will be submitted to the state for approval. The right-of-way will begin as soon as Casaw 16 right-of-way is near completion, probably right about New Year's, so about two, three weeks out. The DNR permit has been approved. The US Army Corps of Engineers permit has been submitted. Bid letting is really going to be dependent on right-of-way acquisition process. That's a big, long, challenging project. There is a likelihood, a lot of moving parts with, with our funding, with the fact that we've got a large bridge in that package, that the bridge, we, we're trying to accelerate the bridge approval so that that gets on the waiting list and that if the legislature does authorize bridge bonds, we'd be in position to at least have the state pay for half of that bridge replacement cost. That's about a $3 million bridge. Bridge prices have gone through the roof. If we don't get that, it puts us stretched pretty thin.
Sure.
And probably having to look into maybe using some of our $24 in advance to make sure we can cover our work that we've got programmed. With that, the other challenge is obviously the number of landowners that Ryan will be meeting with and trying to buy land from. So the project bid date will be dependent, we, we want to try to get it out early to take advantage of good prices. If we don't get it out early, there's a likelihood that we'll have to revise the contract verbiage because of the scope of work to probably extend it into the subsequent year, but we want to make sure that the bridge is only out one year and we can get the bridge replaced, so we'll have to be looking at phasing that. The other big hang-up on a big, long project like that is if we don't have the right-of-way, we can't give the utilities notification to get out of the way. In an ideal world, we'd have the right-of-way and utilities moving a year in advance so we can come in and construct, but with the staffing and, and the challenges buying right-of-way, that's just not been a reality for us. So that, we're, we're moving along on that. We want to get it out the door this summer, however, there's a chance that some of the work could leak into the subsequent year, which wasn't really part of our original ideal plan. Casaw 26 from 57 to Minnesota Highway 22, Bolton Make is submitted 95% plans for State Aid's middle this month. That one's moving right along. Right-of-way acquisition is beginning. Most of that is actually temporary easement. We've got one landowner who may be challenging, and it's the one where we need to get permanent right-of-way, so we're going to begin working on that process right-of-way. But we're looking at a bid letting that could be as early as February, again, depending on that right-of-way acquisition process, and how our 2023 funding allocations come out once the Commissioner's order is sent out to the counties. And again, as we've talked about, we've got four bridge design projects in process. Casaw 4 is under design. We're still working on trying to get the channel survey. Our, our surveyors are usually, you know, working, we, we carry construction almost into Thanksgiving, and then there's a really small window for them to try to do this, but our right-of-way guys also want stakes along all the projects so that they can show the landowners what the property impacts are going to be and get survey tied in. So if conditions won't fit, they're trying to get those surveys picked up. So Casaw 10 is the same situation. It's under design, but they're waiting on us for a survey of the channel. And then Casaw 29 and County Road 146 are under design. The channel surveys have been submitted. Casaw 11 from the West County Line to Casaw 6 will begin after 16 is wrapped up. The aerial survey and wetland donations have been completed. And Victory Drive, County State Highway 82. From Hoffman Road to Fair Street, we intend to send out a request for proposals for engineering design services in the coming weeks for a mid-January response. We also do need to give an intent-to-cost participate agreement put together for approval by the city and the county, because the city will have a share for their, their portion of half of the trails and locks and also half of the signal systems. Maintenance activity updates.[1771.01] When we're not plowing snow during the winter, the crews are working on tree removals, replenishing our aggregate stockpiles for next year, hauling sand, gravel, P rock, et cetera. They're also going to work on shop facility maintenance, routine activities of that nature. As a sidebar, I'm working with the city of Manicato to update our municipal maintenance agreement as well, so I anticipate bringing that in January. I actually hope to bring it this month, but some of the revisions and staff will, they promised me that the three or four days that we're over the contract, they'll keep plowing our roads in town and doing the maintenance. So we'll get that set for January to have that updated municipal maintenance agreement. We've been working on several studies through the MAPLE and maybe Chair Pevo has talked about these already, but I'll just touch on them briefly. We have a corridor study, which is a pretty extensive study going on on County State Highway 5, Third Avenue, all the way from Riverfront Drive to the North County Line. It's been broken into three segments. The scope of that was a significantly large study, so we broke that out into two calendar years into 2022 and 2023. SRF was selected, they moved to develop, identifying issues, meeting with the public to, as part of that issue outreach and public outreach, and then developed an existing conditions report, started developing some of the mapping. And now it's kind of been put on the shelf until they can pick back up in '23, so they'll start kind of moving forward with the actual guts of that recommendations for that report, the alternative evaluation and things of that nature. So there'll be more to come from that study. The city of Eagle Lake requested a pedestrian study I talked about along Cassaw 27 and obviously the recommendation has been, there's a bit of a, a bit of an area on the very far east right-of-way where it's believed that a trail could be retrofitted, kind of along the trailer part there. So that's where the recommendation was to put this grade separated trail. And obviously, a funding application is following that. There was a mobility study in South Bend Township with, along Cassaw 33 and Cassaw 69 with recommendations for, along 33 as it proceeds to the north, adjacent to waste management and up to 69, a sidewalk that could be put into the boulevard area. However, it's challenging there. There's no, there's limited boulevards and a space to do it, and there's also no curb and gutter, no real other pedestrian infrastructure. And then along Cassaw 69, you know, the big issue is that people are going down to the gas station. That's really the only retail in La Hilaire area. So we looked at different solutions. They tried to shoehorn a trail. It just doesn't fit. You know, as you know, going down that hillside, it's effectively carved into the bluff. So they settled, I think, more on the idea of wider shoulders that pedestrians could utilize to at least be off the traveled roadway. And it's, it's not ideal, but it's a compromise. And so that, the township was understanding that. The other challenge that the township has is financial resources to pay for what would be their share of a half of a trail. So widened shoulders could certainly be incorporated easier into a future project and be less disruptive for a road that we didn't really have plans to make. Massive reconstruction project, you know, we try to avoid reconstructing roads just to fit trails in. That's an expensive practice. If we were to go down that road, it's just seldom warranted for the roads' necessities. The last one we've been working on is Minnesota State University-Manicato pedestrian study and that identified the pedestrian crossings at Ellis, the mid-block crossing where we have the pedestrian refuge island that goes between the athletic fields and the athletic buildings with the RFP there, Rapid, Rapid Tangerine, flashing beacon, and then the intersection with Warren Street. The study's been finalized with preferred alternatives as the diagonal pedestrian underpass is the preferred alternative. However, obviously, that's a very expensive project, so that report will be used to help justify different funding applications that could be made for that type of project. I think there's got to be a lot of discussion on who's going to lead that project and the timing of it and the funding, participation levels, things of that nature. It's going to have to have substantial external funding to make it viable. There was, if you recall, there was also discussion about some lane modifications for the transit buses and changing the signal phasing around and either keeping the students coming to my bearings, to the west and then to the north as they cross, so that they did continue crossing at Ellis, or there was a proposal of an all-cross, which is basically just a scramble and all the lights shut down and they can go whatever direction they want. The all-cross did have some delays, additional delays to drivers, which gave me concern, also gave the city of Manicato concern. So I think there's probably some difference of opinion between MSU and the counties and the cities on preference for the acreage crossing options, but we can continue to talk through that. I did speak, Indiana University has one near their intersection, and I spoke with actually the city's traffic engineer out there in Sioux Falls, and he did say, yep, we get complaints about the added delay, but given the pedestrian volumes, I think that's a compromise we've got to continue talking about.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if I'm all interested in doing the undergrade, you know, unless someone else is funding it, and I don't think you guys should have to take that project on either as far as the county goes. You guys got resources that are struggling now trying to build the projects we need to build. So I think that certainly, if they are going to pursue that, it needs to be led by MSU and the city as far as I'm concerned, but we need to, you know, be supportive if we can, but I don't think we have a lot of resources to give them at this point.
That was discussed at our MAPLE.
And I still, I know you guys have concerns about the traffic count, but that all-ways crosswalk is just something that, I don't remember what the price tag was, but it looked interesting to me.
Yeah, that was at different colleges that had all-cross walk.
Augustan.
Augustan and there was, I think, other, but that, that was what I kind of thought was better than underground.
Yeah. The struggle is identifying the user cost of a student walking into college class versus a separate truck or something sitting there in the driveway or the vehicle occupancy and the time.
What do they, obviously, they light up something saying, you know, they stops all traffic and then advises the students that they can cross.
Yep, the crosswalks are actually painted diagonally across the intersection.
Right. But, you know, obviously, it must be a timeframe or two minutes or something.
Yeah, the traffic engineers.
Then there's some sort of a lighting system that tells the walkers not to walk no more and allows.
Just like a regular crosswalk.
Except diagonally.
You can go.
Cost-wise, that's obviously the choice.
Versus the underpass.
And a bridge.
Well, yeah, correct. The bridge was, that one was, you know, you've got to show it for consideration, but it wasn't a realistic option because you expect students to do it.
Yeah, I mean, no. And, and what happens is, well, you know, traffic is going to back up, but as soon as people understand that if they're going to go through that intersection and that might happen, they're, they're going to have a two or three-minute delay because of that, they'll, they, they get it. So I agree with Mark that I think that the best thing for it is to have the all-cross if that's what they're going to do. I also agree with Kip that this is something MSU and the city of Manicato needs to, to take the lead on, not us.
Yeah, like you said, it just gave me a little bit of concern with the delays and what does that result in? And again, I think the students are accustomed to waiting there, the extra 10 seconds versus the vehicles waiting the extra 10 or whatever, the actual number. I don't have it in front of me, but I know the city had concerns about it. Evidently, there was one years and years ago within the city and it was not highly successful. Is that correct? Does anybody?
I remember it. It was downtown and where Brett's and all the shopping was, and it would depend, I don't know how they did it, but yeah, traffic stopped and everybody went every direction. That's back when downtown was busy.
It worked.
It worked just fine. Sometimes it would just be for crossing. It would like be cross, cross, and then all cross. So it wasn't like all the time. It wasn't all cross.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Yeah, these are relatively new concepts, so that haven't been used a lot of.
Relatively new old times.
Well, yes. I don't even know if they knew about that one. I don't think we got.
It came up with some of the, we look, several people in our MAPLE knew about it because they were there. So, yeah.
Remember it well.
All right. Well, the last item I have for discussion is the Rapidan Dam update. December 7, 2022 memorandum that's been included in the board packet, and this is obviously a summary of discussions that staff had regarding the dam since the November 3 update. On November 23, I received an email from Eagle Creek Renewable Energy regarding the MISO Midwest ISO model that, settlement node it's called. Rapidan was, effectively Rapidan was a big enough facility that Excel had to model Rapidan in its energy generation network and do, and Eagle Creek had to do reporting to Excel or Excel had to do reporting, I'm sorry, Excel had to do reporting to the MISO, which I don't know what that acronym stands for, I apologize. I believe it's, it's an energy regulatory acronym. But Excel was responsible for reporting for Rapidan as it was producing electricity to the MISO. Now that the facility's offline and has no power, power sale agreement anymore, power purchase agreement has been terminated with Excel, they don't want to continue to do the regular submittals, saying that they're not generating electricity. Makes sense. With that being said, there's two options for consideration. The county board take over reporting responsibility for Excel. We don't know really what that would entail. We'd have to become a member of the MISO. We'd have to do some reporting collateral posting requirements and make submissions to the MISO. We're not sure of what type of cost that would result in. The other option would be that the MISO retires the node in its system. With that being said, it would just require approval from the owner, which is now the county of the generating facility, that would be affected by the retirement of that node. Essentially, if we have near-term plans to rehabilitate, return to power generation and selling power again, the first option would make sense, given that the second option is cleaner and if we were ever to make any changes to any of the equipment within Rapidan upgrades or retrofits, it's likely that it would have to be remodeled and be effectively reestablished anyway as a settlement node. So the retirement of the node would be much cleaner, much less time-consuming. If we were to continue to do the reporting, it would be time-consuming, costly and somewhat With that being said, staff would recommend that a future county consideration for approval to retirement or terminate that settlement node when the documents are provided by Eagle Creek Renewable Energy. I had a copy of the resolution for it, but the data that I don't have privilege to with respect to the Excel node number and things of that nature, Eagle Creek was supposed to provide that to me and they hadn't provided it prior to the meeting deadline. So working on getting that for future meeting. That would be my recommendation. If the board's agreeable to that.
That sounds reasonable to me.
And they don't need action on it, it's just a future.
All right. Thank you very much.
On November 25, we kicked off weekly virtual meetings with BAR Engineering to coordinate response letter and development of necessary documents in response to the FERC. September 29, 2022 letter regarding the annual dam safety inspection follow-up comments. I know the board has seen copies of that letter. If you'd like another copy, I'd be more happy to share it with you. During that call, we discussed the items listed in the letter. The FERC item number one in their letter is that the county is to provide its plan and schedule by December 30, 2022, which outlines essential decisional milestones regarding the feasibility studies, gate repairs, completion of the fourth Part 12D report, independent consultants' recommendations per section 1.3.3, which is for the weep holes and spillway energy dissipation, as well as crack monitoring. 1.3.4, revising the DSSMP and inspecting the post-tension corbels. And 1.3.5, fill and seal the upstream face of the non-overflow bulkhead, cracks and complete long-term maintenance repairs, as well as section 1.3.7, file updated STID. The county and BAR have a near-final overall completion ready, letter response prepared, and I'll plan on submitting that today, if not tomorrow, after our discussion here today. And I'm going to just kind of hold on to discussion and that timeline. I'll work through the rest and I've actually got additional information in my next point, and then we'll work back to that. FERC item number two was to provide a completed diving inspection report and the status of the tenor gates repair so that a dive inspection could be safely scheduled. They don't want to do a dive inspection report with the gates open because of safety concerns, especially if there's flow going over the dam. The BAR has begun working on the DSSMR dam safety surveillance monitoring report plan and intends to complete it by the April 1, 2023 deadline. Dive inspection is not likely to be continued until the gates can be safely closed. However, the county staff has been doing those annual downstream weep and surveys, which is supplemental information for the FERC. And it did not show, when we completed that in fall of '22, did not show significant additional scour revealed on what had been surveyed in 2020. FERC item number three, required monthly reading of crack gauges. We're working on doing that monthly. There are some that are, you have to climb down the right face of the dam and down that actual wall and have a ladder, so conditions like this where it's unsafe for somebody to try to be traversing those slopes, we're not going to do it, but the ones within the dam are reading monthly and having those available for reporting. Item number four, review the DSSMR filed by Eagle Creek and respond by December 30 with our findings and statement and certification regarding the dam's continued operation. BAR is hesitant to certify that. I think we talked about that last month because of the time and the, to certify it as a licensed engineer, they have to do their due diligence to ensure that the statements that are made, that they can stand behind. It's well outside of my wheelhouse and my area of practice, so it wouldn't be really ethical for me to certify the safety of the dam. And we'll kind of follow back up on that one as well in the subsequent conversation with the FERC. Item number five is updating owner dam safety plan. The plan is under development and will be submitted by the deadline. FERC item number six, review and update the existing public safety plan, and BAR has completed a draft of that, provided to the county, and so we're rounding the corner on being able to submit that as well. So to follow up on this, I spoke on November 28 with Scott Arado from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding the county's responses to their letter. Another letter is coming soon from the FERC. Actually, since I wrote this update, I received that letter and provided additional guidance. I'll talk about that at the subsequent board meeting in January. I don't think it's, it really gets technical about the weep holes or the pismeters and things of that nature. But we discussed the FERC number one item, which was the county's providing a timeline for, for decision points. And also, we discussed it in fact to the relation that the county is considering hiring a consultant firm to assist with FERC licensure surrender process. Scott said it's very important for the county to ensure that we lay out the possibility of the FERC licensure surrender, as well as the steps and timeframe for a licensure surrender and ultimately, what would be done with the dam. And as you may recall from previous conversations with the FERC, if we were to pursue licensure surrender, they would recommend it in a kind of a two-step process. Step one, we make a decision on the FERC license with the short-term answer being that we're going to leave the dam standing as is, and then they can make a decision on what repairs would be necessary, if any. They said, then, because they have to do an EFA document, then, you know, whether we, if the county chooses to pursue removal, the removal study would be done under the core process potentially. If we, it would muddy the process. So the dam license surrender folks said that would be the way to go. However, Scott somewhat contradicted that and said that it's, it's going to be important for us to have a decision regarding, you know, is the county going to be removing? It is going to also have an implication on what licensing or what regulatory requirements they put on the DNR and what, what requirements they put on the county, if that makes sense. I explained that well enough. Based on the conversation I had with Scott, he thought three months or so as a decision for licensure surrender of the FERC license would be an acceptable timeframe to the FERC. And I threw out a number on the, what was probably the high end, and he probably gave me something that was a little bit more on the low end as far as the decision on whether to repair the dam to stand or ultimately pursuing removal or ownership transfer. So he said, I threw out, would 12 months be acceptable? And he said, well, we'd like to see it maybe in six months or so, but there's also the fact that the FERC licensure surrender process has to be worked through and that, nobody's really given us a tremendously clear answer on what's going to be expected of us because it's different with each dam as the regulatory responsibility is handed over from the FERC to the DNR. So the timeline was put out there of six to 12 months for a decision on repair, stand, removal or ownership. And it's, it's important to put the caveat out there that that's going to be dependent on factors at play that come along with if we choose to do the licensure surrender process. My recommendation would be to work within the timeframe that the FERC has indicated would be adequate, perhaps six to nine months would be more of a reasonable statement for making that decision. And my request, because I have to include it in my letter and I'd like to get that back to the FERC soon, would be back to the FERC soon, would be for board discussion and direction regarding that anticipated decisional timeframe for inclusion in my letter.
I'm certainly ready to do the, pull the FERC permit, and I think it's reasonable within six to nine months to make the decision on the rest of it. As long as we get rid of the first FERC permit, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I think, I think it's.
Keeps us on the, keeps us moving. I'm supportive of that. You don't have to wait three months for the FERC permit, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Make that happen.
Okay.
I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but.
I agree with that.
And that's indicating that we're not interested in generating electricity with it.
Correct. That's my understanding.
Is this what's required by December 30th?
The, correct. That, and how long till we make a decision on the FERC licensure, whether we're going to keep it or whether we want to surrender it? And then how long until we make a decision on whether the county's going to repair the dam to stand, try to transfer ownership to somebody else, which we've had, we've talked about that. That's, ideally, that would be great if somebody else wanted to take the dam and try to make electricity with it, but whoever that entity would be has to have tremendous financial wherewithal.
Right.
We can't give it to a small independent contractor because they don't have the financial capability to properly take care of it or pursue removal options.
So that is a third option, but not a very viable option as well.
Nobody's jumped out of the woodwork yet from us yet, unfortunately.
So, since we have a board meeting next week, could we make that decision by next week then?
The.
That's the last board meeting of the year.
With the FERC permit? With the FERC permit?
FERC permit.
So I'll jump, maybe I'll jump to that and then we'll come back to the decisional timeframe. The FERC permit, I started talking with bar and other potential consultant firms about assisting the county with that surrender process. They do have some times got to go into it to scope because this is a, it could be this scope of work or it could be this scope of work. So in order to get a good proposal and reasonable price, it's a very complex issue. So we talked with two different firms. They both have the resources to do it. However, the other firm would require considerable time just giving them up to speed on reviewing all the reports, whereas bar already has that time put in. So I think they've got a significant competitive advantage, and they've worked very well with us. I don't have a reason to really look elsewhere. The other firm's staff may be slightly more experienced in licensure surrender, however, I'm confident in bar staff as well. With that being said, I would recommend pursuing sculpting and development of a professional services agreement for FERC licensure surrender with bar. Whether I can get it for you next meeting, next week is the board meeting?
Last one of the.
I'd have to walk it in if I could even do that. So we have a call with the FERC today at 11:30. I've kind of jumped the gun on this because I just wanted to get the meeting set up. But we have a meeting with the FERC today at 11:30 to discuss the scope of work that would entail for bar so that they can put that documentation. I will try to get that. We'll see how the meeting goes.
Whatever you can.
If not, I could certainly bring it January 3rd.
Yeah, I mean, we're all in agreeance, I think, that the FERC permit's going to go.
Okay.
Start working that, whether it's next week's meeting or January's meeting. It's a, I just, I'm bewildered that it takes several months in a, a firm to discontinue your permit, but it is what it is.
No, I understand the answer on timeframe. I could, if I could say less, you know, two, one to three months, one to two months decision basis or.
Okay.
Like say within a month.
Whatever works.
For the FERC?
FERC licensure, yep.
Dump tomorrow, our next board meeting, or Tom, when you bring it to the board meeting, it's done. I mean, we're done with the FERC permit discussion.
All right.
Yeah, Tom, we're ready to go. We just need a resolution.
I'm appreciative of that direction.
All right.
That's the direction.
Now the other one.
So, can I back up a little?
Hello, Kevin?
So we're on number four, right, on our, our, these, as we're talking about the process, and it was either bar or other potential firms, right, assisting?
Yes.
Staff recommends bar.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Have we made a decision on that, or do we, have we come, okay?
I'll bring a proposal from bar, an actual professional services contract.
Okay.
But before I got too far into the weeds of having bar tie up a lot of time in developing their scope of work, I wanted to at least kind of get more concurrence on that.
So we're deciding to work with bar on this, we just don't know what that entails until we see their proposal. Okay.
You got a week to do that, too.
That's okay, man.
Everybody's an idiot.
That was a joke.
I think you're right, Ryan.
Gave the roads clear.
Especially after the storm runs through.
You're right about trying to spool up another firm. I mean, we all, again, I just can't believe it's this complicated to get rid of this permit, but it is what it is.
So hindsight being 2020.
I just wanted to make sure that we didn't need to make a motion or a decision on.
Yeah, Bob can brag it before with that.
Yeah, the action will come when that professional agreement comes before the board.
We're indicating today that we're okay with staying with bar.
Yes, and pursuing that.
Just so we're clear.
That licensure surrender process and incurring maybe a little bit of cost to develop that scope.
It won't be a little bit of cost, but you can be optimistic.
Any other questions?
It's all relative. So I'm going to jump back.
Sorry.
That's okay now to item 3.0 B, point two, which takes us back to that timeframe to make a decision on repair to stand, removal of, removal or ownership transfer to incorporate into my FERC response letter. Obviously, the licensure surrender process will sway the results, and I'll look for board, you know, continue to provide updates and look, invite you to the calls and meetings we have with the FERC because it's always fun. And there may be things that come out of that process that sway the decision or impact it forward or backwards, I can't say. However, they're looking for a response now to say that within six, nine, 12, whatever it is, is when we anticipate making a decision on what the long-term future of the dam is. I'm not asking you for a decision on what the future of the dam is, just how long until we make that decision.
September.
September of '23.
Nine months.
That would be nine months.
I think that's.
I'm just throwing a number out there, probably.
I like it.
Quit talking about it.
I like it. That's a good idea.
Based on time, assuming the report from bar is somewhat timely.
Well, yeah. If we don't get that report for nine months, yeah.
Yeah.
I think September or sooner. If we get our information done sooner, we can do it sooner, but, but I think that you can have the September being the end date.
Okay. And the bar, it's kind of a process, you know? We'll submit a letter request that, that, you know, if we approved our report, let's say in January, because I'm not as optimistic that I'll get the proposal done by tomorrow to get into more factor Thursday morning.
Just fine.
January, let's say we do that, start that in January, maybe we could have something to submit, depending what authority the board, if they want to approve the submittal or or not, you know, maybe we could give it submitted by February. The FERC did say that that's about a six-month process when we spoke with them originally. I'll find out again more today, so.
Okay.
All right.
I appreciate that, guys. It's very helpful for me to include in that response if I can get that back to the FERC and, you know, that we're talking about this. And they, I will add, FERC staff have been fantastic.
Good.
Scott's been awesome to work with, very supportive, very sympathetic to what the county's facing and the challenges associated with the complexity of the issue. So I, I'm very appreciative of everything the FERC staff has done to help us out with this process.
It's telling we're trying to build a new highway building, too.
Yeah. He said, well, and he understands that we have other irons in the fire, that my, my principal calling is not to be a dam engineer. Depending who you talk to and how, what context is, I don't know, but anyway.
Kevin?
So, just so I'm clear, so as we look at this licensed surrender timeframe, and when that's complete, then we've got to do the NEPA?
That's part, the.
Or is that part of the, is that considered part of the surrender?
That's part of the surrender process, that has to be evaluated. The discussions go to center today around, does bar do that or does the FERC do that? In our initial conversation, the FERC said they could do that, but bar wants clarification on the distinction between those responsibilities.
So when the surrender process is done, will be done with the NEPA process as well? Might not be the same, but that timeline. My question is, do we, if this, if the licensed surrender is done, and now we've got another month or two of NEPA?
The NEPA process should be pulled in parallel with the surrender process because it goes to public comment.
Okay.
And there's a public, two, two rounds of public comment period that's tucked into that timeframe, as well as development of those NEPA documents. And that NEPA document would be, let's just say, just to leave it stand as-is for the time being until the next decision is made. And then the next decision, if removal is the option, then another NEPA document would have to be done due to the term of the ecological impacts of that.
Right.
If that makes sense.
But the initial required NEPA should be, we should have that information at the same time that the surrender process is.
Part of the surrender process. Correct. Yep. Good catch. The rest of the memo was routine monitoring, surveillance, things that I know you've seen before. So this is very helpful. I'm very appreciative of the time you've taken to give me guidance on this. So if there's not any other questions, that will conclude my report.
No, it's a lot of work on your part, Ryan. We appreciate that.
Thank you much for everything.
And your other staff. We'll let him go. He's got a call at 11:30. We better let him get ready for it. Have a good Christmas.
See you this afternoon, probably.
If you're not on a call.
Thanks, Ryan.
If it's still going down, I'm going to have other problems.
All right. Do we keep going, or do we want to break?
Well, you can keep going.
Let's get the staff through here.
We've got staff sitting here, let's try to get them moving.
Okay, keep going here. All right.
We have to break at the end of our board meeting.
Property Environmental Resources, or no, excuse me, I got Pat.
Pat, Patrick first.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I've noticed how full your schedule is today, so I'll have no comments additional to the report, it speaks for itself. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, then we have our Property Environmental Resources, Mr. Ryan Short, and we have Mark Toot, Mark Manfield.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity. Have one item to present from the assessor's office this morning. The memo that we have in front of you is an annual memo notifying the Board of Changes that have been made after the adjournment of the 2022 County Board of Appeal and Equalization. That was held in mid-June. So this memo will go through some of those changes and the reason behind some of those changes that have taken place since the closure of that County Board of Appeal in June. Changes are generally results of special property tax programs where application deadlines occurred after the close of that meeting. And I'll take a couple quick minutes to go through some of the categories that we have in this memo. The properties that you see here on that first page are parcels that lost or gained eligibility for special property tax programs or classifications. The notes section on the far right column will give you the primary reason for that change. So on the right-hand column, you'll see Class 1B, as far as the note, and those are blind disabled properties. Properties below that, you see, says Class 4D, those are low-income apartment properties that gained eligibility for that or lost eligibility for that program. And then on the bottom of that page through, the majority of that next page are Vets Exclusions that gained eligibility or lost eligibility for that as well. At the bottom of the next page, there's a handful of parcels that lost or gained property tax eligibility due to acquisition, review, or other reasons. As you can see on those, most of the, all of those are exempt to taxable. Parcels that were exempt and due to one reason, development or something else, are now taxable. The next grouping are parcels that also had classification changes, and generally, these are residential parcels that have now switched to agricultural due to acquiring land, making them eligible to receive further benefits. And then there are a handful of parcels where the notes say acre changes. These are parcels that had changes made to the land sizes based on staff projects, and these are parcels that the land size changed due to right-of-way acquisitions. And the remainder of those parcels, through the rest of that memo, are parcels that had changes due to their homestead status. And the deadline for those are at the end of the year. So, so that encompasses the changes that took place. There's no action needed by the board apart from the presentation of these, and accounting of them in minutes of the board is sufficient to meet the statutory, statutory requirement to present these to the board by the end of December. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you want to have any questions?
No, explained it very well. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan, much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Good morning.
Morning, Mark. Thanks, Mark.
Slide over to the middle here, if you don't mind. Here, more so on the planning and zoning side for two quick items. One would be a review of our annual fee schedule. Over the last few years, we've adjusted that fee schedule to represent costs of the department based on time and resources. This year, we have just a handful of changes, most notably some modest increases to residential and commercial construction permits, and then also some land split costs there. And then in addition to that, some increased, proposed increase to the after-the-fact fees on our permits. So one of the things that we considered with our after-the-fact fees is the approval authority and who is approving those and the time associated with that. So we're proposing an increase in after-the-fact fees from a general $150 fee, which is currently the fee with the 22 fee schedule, to $250 for administratively-approved permits such as construction permits. And then a four, or up to $400 for a Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission items. Of course, those planning commission items come before you for approval. And then just a note here that the after-the-fact fee is in addition to the regular permit fees. And then we would be looking for approval from the board here and an implementation date of January 1st of next year. Any questions?
Any questions, Mark?
I would move approval.
I'll second it.
Kip, second by Patty. Okay, any discussion?
The only comment that I would have is that we've been talking about this in the past, and these after-the-fact permits are problematic, but you don't want to make the fee, we talked about a higher fee at one point, but you don't want to make the fee so high that people take the chance and then have to do it after the fact because they want to try to skirt around the system. But I think in general, we believe most of the after-the-facts are because people just didn't know. There, there are a few that people, you know, would rather beg for forgiveness and ask for permission, but I think, and, or we think, that most of them are just not knowledgeable what's going on. So we don't want to penalize them horribly, but we have to recover our costs. So that's just some background on the discussion we've had in the past.
All right. Any else? Thank you, Mark.
And then I do have, I don't know if we need a motion.
Oh, yeah, we have to vote. Excuse me. Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
And then one final item from planning and zoning crew. We do have the annual reappointments for our planning commission and board of adjustment. This year, we have existing planning commission and board of adjustment members that we'd just like to re-avoid. Ms. Terrence Sertie and then Mr. Daniel Roberts, we'd be looking, recommending reapproval for them for a term between January of 2023 and December of 2025. And then the board of adjustment would be Ms. Sertie as well, and then Mr. Dusty Riley, Michael Dusty Riley, and that would be the same term from January of '23 to December of '25.
Okay, it's been moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Vance. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Mark. See you in a few minutes. Yeah, Merry Christmas, you guys.
All right. We have, let's see here.
Down to administration.
Administration, yep.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for November 22nd.
I would move to approve.
It's been County Board Minutes, Vance moves, second?
Second.
Second by Kip. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll move to pay the bills.
Kip moves to pay the bills, your second?
I'll second.
Second by Patty. Discussion, questions? Discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries. Okay.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 13 in your packet. It is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Do have two action items for the Board's consideration today. First is authorization for the County Board Chair and County Administrator to sign an agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Union 49, for calendar years 2023 through 2025. I can give the Board a brief update on some of the provisions included in this union contract for your consideration again. As indicated, it is a three-year agreement. The general wage increases in this three-year agreement include a $1.50 per hour increase plus the implementation of our classification and compensation study being done in 2023. Then in 2024, we have a 3.25% general wage adjustment, as well as a 3.25% general wage adjustment for 2025. There were some other language changes that the Board should be aware of, one of which is an increase by one week on each end of our summer hour schedule. So we'll add one extra week in the spring and one extra week in the fall of working those summer hours. And those summer hours, again, are nine-hour days, Monday through Thursday, with a four-hour Friday timetable. We also are adding language that would add Juneteenth as a paid holiday if the state of Minnesota approves that as part of a legislative action. That language is similar to what we have in some other contracts. We made some changes to our vacation schedule that are bringing consistency to this group with other bargaining groups, basically eliminating the one-year accrual rate and having that be adjusted to match other unions. We also changed some language about allowing vacation time to be utilized during the probation period. We have a language change that increased the amount of hours that can be converted to a healthcare savings plan when there's excess accrual at the end of the year. We previously had a limit of 50 hours being transferred. This proposal has an increase to 60 hours. We brought in some consistency in our funeral leave language in terms of definition of family members, so again, matching other bargaining groups. Also had a change to language related to the contribution to an HSA. We had previously had a flat dollar amount listed in the contract. We have other unions that have language that says the county will provide 50% of the deductible, and so we're changing this language to match that. Then there was a provision regarding compensation on Christmas Eve. We had language in the contract that indicated double time will be provided for a call-out on Christmas Eve for these employees when Christmas Eve fell on Monday through Friday or on Sunday, but Saturday was kind of missed with this group. They would get time and a half. And so they're one of the few groups that has that risk of being called out on Christmas Eve, and so they asked that that be adjusted so it'd be double time, basically, any day of the week when Christmas Eve falls on that day. Kind of a major concession that the county made was related to the three mechanics. They are required to provide their own tools, and so the request from the union was to receive a yearly tool allowance, and so we have proposed a $500 per year tool allowance for the three mechanics. Otherwise, the language changes were cleanup and other kind of consistency types of elements. So be happy to answer any questions that the Board might have on this proposed agreement.
Any questions, Bob? An agreement?
I don't have any at this point. Good job. Hard work.
Got it done. Yeah. So, all right. Have it in front of us.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved by Vance.
Second.
Second by Kip. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
The next action item is authorization to initiate recruitment for a sergeant in our jail. This is a request from the jail to take an existing custody officer level position and convert that into a sergeant position. We currently have three employees that work in our programming area of the jail. The need, though, right now, under DOC requirements, is that we only have two positions to meet our inmate census level. And so the request from the jail is to take one of those positions, elevate it to a sergeant to work in more of an administrative capacity, to help with background checks, training of new employees, allowing our jail administrator and assistant jail administrator to spend more time in the jail, giving guidance to our correctional officers. And so this is not an additional FTE, but it is an increase in the pay level of an existing employee.
All right.
I'll move approval.
Say we need some approval in a second. Kip moved, and Patty second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries. All right.
Under informational items, then, we have received a resignation of a division chief in the county attorney's office and have initiated recruitment to refill that position, and ultimately resulting in a promotion of an assistant county attorney, too, to that division chief position.
We can all congratulate Mr. Hannish for winning his Crow Wing County Attorney spot.
Yes.
McLeod?
Yeah.
McLeod? I thought it was Crow Wing. Maybe that's the city. McLeod.
The kind of final step in all of that process, then, is we've initiated recruitment to refill that assistant county attorney position. We also had a resignation of a maintenance technician, too, in our Public Works Department, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of an assistant county attorney, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we had the resignation of a chief deputy sheriff effective in March. Technically, will be leaving us at the end of this year and utilizing crude benefits through March. We had a promotion of a child support enforcement specialist to an eligibility specialist, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that child support enforcement specialist. We filled a part-time correctional officer position in the jail, as well as a 911 telecommuter or dispatch position. Lastly, we've had change to a start date of a correctional officer from December 1st to December 12th. I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board might have about the human resources informational items.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Any questions at all? Okay.
All right. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 14 in your packet. It is a memo regarding 2023 intoxicating liquor licenses, seeking Board approval of renewal of the following on-sale liquor licenses for Indian Island Winery, Mount Cato, Terrace View Golf Course, both the Minneopa Golf Course as well as Terrace View, and then the Windmill in Mapleton.
Moved to approve.
Vance moves to approve all liquor licenses. Second by Kevin. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Item number 15 in your packet is a memo from the St. Paul Port Authority regarding a request that a property assessed clean energy special assessment be placed on some parcels in Blue Earth County. Tailwind has purchased a strip mall and intends to put some solar on that strip mall, and so as part of the PACE program, we've worked with the St. Paul Port Authority in the past to do this assessment on the property tax statement to pay off a loan that will be applied to install that solar.
I'll move approval.
Say we need a motion, and Kip moves.
I'll second.
Vance seconds. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Item number 16 in your packet is a memo regarding a county extension committee reappointment. We have had the regional extension director request a reappointment of Lee Williams to the county extension committee. This appointment would run from January of '23 through December of 2025. Mr. Williams does reside in Commissioner District 2.
I would move to approve.
Vance wants to move to approve Lee Williams' appointment. Okay.
Second.
Second. Kip, discussion?
I'll just make a point that Lee's very active in that committee. He comes to all the meetings, asks a lot of questions, and does a great job, so.
He's all-around good guy. There we go. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Item number 17 is a memo regarding the vacancy in the office of the sheriff. As you're well aware, Sheriff Peterson has submitted his resignation from the office, with his last day being December 31st. Based on Minnesota statute, those sheriff terms are for four years, so having Sheriff Peterson leave at the end of this year does leave a couple-day gap before the new sheriff takes over, and so recommending appointment of Mr. Jeff Wersel to fill the remainder of Sheriff Peterson's term effective January 1st through the 2nd.
I'll move that.
Patty moves. Okay. We have second?
Second.
Second by Vance. Discussion?
Can they handle without a sheriff for two days? Probably not legally.
Well, in our best interest to have that gap filled.
No, no. Good idea. So, all right. No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries. All right.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
That's all you have, so we're done with, okay. And we just have our reports of our committees. Who do they start with? Boy, we start with a newbie.
A newbie? I haven't been anywhere. I did go to the Association of Minnesota counties conference and the Township Official meeting.
That's right. See?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Kip.
Mine's relatively short also. I did not make it out of the AMC conference. I'm glad we had good representation there, so thank you all for doing that. I had a couple of regional radio board committee meetings online. Nothing new and alarming going on there, just kind of day-to-day operations. And then some landowner meetings for some ditch stuff. We had SWCB the other night. Got a couple, one new elected person there, but we haven't met that person yet. Be coming in. And Bill has been on the SWCB board for 24 years, right? Bill Gardner. So we congratulated him, and he did a great job, was one working with him. And then we had our MRCI meeting yesterday, and everything's moving along fairly well there. So I've had a good year this year and projecting another good year next year and serving lots of clients in the Blue Earth County, nine-county area. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thanks, Ann. Kip, thank you. And let's go, Kevin.
Since our November 22nd board meeting, we had a PR update on the 22nd of November. Attended the Rural Minnesota Energy Board on the 28th. We met for our 11th Lassure One Watershed One Plan on the 30th. On the 1st of December, I attended the GMG Rural Forum, was absent from the Township Officers. AMC has already been mentioned. I attended that. I would just add that was elected vice chair of the Environment and Natural Resources Committee at their policy committee meeting. On the 12th, we had the Drainage Work Group meeting up in St. Paul. This morning, SWCD has been mentioned with Kip. This morning was the GMG legislative event, which I did. A couple coming up, just worth mentioning. Tomorrow, Blue Earth County will be hosting Senator France, Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee on the Senate side with the Rural Minnesota Energy Board folks. And on Thursday, we will have our 12th meeting of the Policy Committee of the Lassure One Watershed One Plan. So this is, we'll look at the plan, we'll be ready for public comment. This is be the 64th meeting in the last three years, three months, and 17 days of our 358-page plan. So anybody that thinks that this is something somebody thought up overnight, is 63 meetings short of the party, I guess. So hopefully, we'll be able to move forward with Lassure One Watershed One Plan as we move forward. Conversations, calls and conversations have been primarily the MFS composting site, some short-term rental questions, and then, of course, ditches makes the list every board meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. And Vance?
All right. Our last board meeting was November 22nd, and then we had our Thanksgiving, of course, after that. November 30th, I had an AMC transportation pre-conference Zoom to go over our issues. Everybody else already mentioned, oh, December 1st, I had a NACO transportation Zoom, I had a library board, and of course, a Township Officers meeting in downtown Mapleton. December 4th through the 7th, we had our AMC meeting, business, annual business meeting. December 8th, I had Transportation Alliance Legislative Meeting with Representative Hornstein, who's always interesting. December 9th, I had a Transportation Alliance Board meeting. And yesterday, I had a TDS Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund meeting in the morning and a TDS Personnel Committee meeting in the afternoon, both on Zoom, so it was not hard to take. And that's all.
All right, Vance, thank you. Well, I guess I had a few things. The December 2nd for me was Sumerex and Joint Powers Board, that meets at Dodge Center at their new facility. Well, it's relatively new. We haven't had that for a while, and they're in the process. They're all, most of them are concerned with recycling and the amounts and the dollars. You know, the prices are lower now, most everything. And we had, or actually, basically for me, it was, yeah, the conference, the AMC, our annual conference, and a lot of things going on there. And that concludes mine, so. So, well, thank you to everybody. I guess we-
Adjourn this meeting.
We adjourn this meeting.
Go to the next.
Yeah, go to the next. So-
So move.
Vance, second. Kip moves, Vance seconds. Do you adjourn the meeting? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries. Meeting adjourned.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Meeting adjourned.